Good morning. Thank you all for being here. This is a regular meeting of the Select Board's Licensing Panel. This body helps the Select Board by holding public hearings where necessary and reviewing applications for various kinds of licenses. How this works, as we call the agenda in order, we ask questions of the applicants. If the, if on the agenda is the application is listed as having a public hearing, we have a public hearing, which individuals will be invited to comment on the application and any thoughts that they may have. And at that point, if there are no concerns raised by the panel, we recommend approval of the license application as part of the Select Board's miscellaneous agenda, which means you don't come back. Next Tuesday, or in this case, it'll be the Tuesday following. Unless there are, unless you, we inform you that there's some question that an individual member of the board might have. If there are questions or concerns, what we typically do is if there's a hearing, we continue it, or we put it on the Select Board's main agenda, and then we do just ask folks to appear in person at the Select Board hearing, which is usually on a Tuesday night. It wouldn't be next Tuesday, it would be the following Tuesday. But before we do that, for items that don't have a public hearing notice, or for questions that are unrelated, or comments that are unrelated to many of the items on the agenda, we have a public comment session. It's a fifteen-minute public comment period. And what we ask is that folks wish to speak, that they identify themselves by raising their hand or using the hand raise feature. You have three minutes. You don't need to use all that time. We ask that you please identify yourself by stating your name, and either your address or your Brookline precinct number, if you are a resident of Brookline. And while we strive to answer questions, we may be, we may not be able to have an answer ready for you and back to you. And that is otherwise it. So does anyone wish to be heard on any matters to which there's not a public hearing or anything else?
There are no hand raised features.
Okay, we'll end public comment then. We'll move on to the miscellaneous agenda, which is the approval of the meeting minutes from August twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Any corrections to those minutes or concerns?
None.
Okay. I do have to call the roll here. So Michael Rubenstein?
Hi.
Jonathan Simpson?
Hi.
Sean Morrison?
Hi.
And I, thank you. Okay. Next, an application for a new common visual and entertainment licenses at one, three, three, three Beacon Street. Question of approving the application of a new commercial license for Subshy LLC, DBA as Arroyo Yemini Coffee. At that address, the hours of operation will be Sunday, nine AM to seven PM. Monday through Wednesday, seven AM to eight thirty PM. Thursday through Friday, seven AM to one AM, and Saturday, nine AM to one AM. The seating will consist of thirty-two inside dining seats and four inside bar seats. Concurrently, there is an application for entertainment licensing, that same, the same business, same DBA, same address, same hours of operation. The entertainment consists of radio, music, jukebox, and television. There will be dancing events, both private and public, instrumental music, violin and or saxophone, as well as vocal music with up to two vocalists. Who do we have on this application? Good morning.
Morning. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
What can you tell us about the restaurant?
Yes, first off, thank you guys very much for your time. It's a pleasure to be here. I would say Arroyo Yemini Coffee really brings in the rich history.
Excuse me, could you introduce yourself, please?
I'm sorry, yes. My name is Zade Barra. I'm actually a pharmacist by training. I'm pursuing opening Arroyo Yemini Coffee in Brookline, bringing a bit of culture and taste to the community. I actually attended MCPHS University in Boston down the street, so I spent a lot of my college days in Brookline, so very familiar with the different aspects and everything it has to offer. Anything more you would like to know about myself? Okay, excellent. So, look, from a coffee shop perspective itself, it really, the goal is to bring more than just coffee, right? It's to bring an environment, to bring that rich history from the region, to bring warm hospitality that's present from the culture, and then also to bring that exceptional coffee experience. It's a fusion between the Yemeni coffee and tea spices and recipes with modern specialty coffees present today, like you would see at other coffee shops, between the coffees, the lattes, the teas, et cetera. And really, as you could also see in the hours of operation, like Thursday, Friday, Saturday, the hours kind of go later into the night. The concept and what we've seen in the past, as this is actually a franchise, right? So there are other locations throughout the country. But what we've seen is it's become a safe space for individuals who choose not to participate in the activities of the nightlife when it comes to alcohol consumption or going out and and what have you. So it's been very popular for young adults and college-age students to really have a place that they can go and visit and spend time with friends during those hours when they may not have alternatives.
You did see that the building department unfortunately has said that because of the conditions under the zoning by law, we can't have live music or dancing at this location.
Okay.
What you can do in that instance is you can request a variance from the Board of Appeals, zoning Board of Appeals. But under our zoning, you can see in the, in the memo here, we can't allow dancing or instrumental music without a variance. So you can apply for that, you can open without it, and then, you know, you can just, but I would strongly recommend, the zoning board is a more formal process. You may want to talk to a lawyer. You know, we can't be your lawyers, unfortunately. So if you have, I would recommend just speaking to local council. There are a number of lawyers in town that handle things like this.
Appreciate that. Yes, thank you.
So we can, we can add, the last thing is, the building, the state building code says the maximum capacity here is thirty-four seats. I see thirty-two inside dining seats and four inside bar seats, which is thirty-six. You, before you before you open, will you please confirm with the building department what the maximum capacity is? Please don't open more than the maximum capacity there. So if you have to strike two seats. You know, we will conditionally approve this, and we'll say for no more than, I would recommend conditionally approving this, say.
Sorry, do you mind, which department should I double check with?
The building department.
Okay.
The other ones that handle, yeah, capacity and stuff. It says that under the state law, you've got thirty-four seat capacity, you're asking for thirty-six. So just check with them, see what they, because I don't know what the difference is functionally between bar seats and pavements. So do. Any other questions, comments from members of the panel?
I will send you a copy of all the meadows approved by the different, the different departments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. And, you know, it's, it's great to have space for folks that don't drink and who don't, you know, are not in my life, folks in town. It's a really important thing for the community, so we're excited for this. So we will keep an eye on this. I'm sorry, are you managing the, the space there? Do you have any, you mentioned you're a pharmacist by trade. Do you have any previous experience managing food establishments or?
Yeah, so I, I've worked in several different Dunkin's locations in the past, more so throughout high school and college, both in, obviously, like the professional route I was taking, but I have direct experience in that regard. Even being like a shift lead at some point. So I've had exposure in that sense, but not necessarily like owning. So this will be a, like, a new venture.
Well, everyone's got a start, so.
Yeah.
You've got, you've got letters and recommendations from people, gentlemen who owns a general franchise, for example.
Yes, it's been extremely helpful, both previously and during the process, and hope to remain that, that way.
Hey, can you talk a little bit about your, you said this was a franchise?
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about your relationship as a franchisee with the, how that works?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a great question. So the franchise is actually based out of Dallas, Texas. That's where it originated from, and now there's about ten locations throughout the US. So they operated for like three years before franchising, and then within the last three to four years, or sorry, within the last two years, they've been taking franchise applications. So it's growing at a steady pace, I would say. In terms of my relationship with them, I actually met, my siblings live in Dallas, and just through my travel there and what have you, I was able to meet them in person and establish a relationship with them, where I felt comfortable moving forward with this specific brand. You may or may not know, there are several other competitor brands that have also had conversations with, you know, in identifying which brand to move forward with, where this one, for several different reasons, was the one I chose to move forward with. And part of it is because of the strong relationship we were able to build and the communication processes that are in place, and this team that they have in, in, set up to facilitate the ease of processing and franchising, building out and running the, the show. But just to touch a little bit more on your question, there are already almost A to C processes and procedures put in place. So I think that's also what kind of gives me that confidence in terms of running and operating the establishment, you know, everything from the build-out to hiring, to operations, to efficiencies and, and design and architecture. So they're very involved, I would say, which is very helpful for me and for any franchise operator, I would say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great. I think with the two conditions we talked about, which is one, we have, we can't allow currently the dancing or live music. Recorded music is fine. And two, just to verify with the building department, the maximum seating capacities, we will recommend approval for no more than the maximum capacity, as identified by the building department. So if that winds up being thirty-two gown seats and four bar seats, it'll be fine. Otherwise, just check with them, see how it goes. We recommend approval of that on the Select Board's miscellaneous agenda at their next meeting. Thanks so much. Welcome to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, a new commercial license, ten twenty-six A Commonwealth Avenue. Question of approving this commercial license for Nanu LLC, DBA Fab Street. Hours of operation will be Monday through Sunday, eight thirty AM to eight thirty PM. Seating will consist of twenty inside seats. Who do we have on this application?
Hi, good morning. Thank you for having me. Name's Daniel, last name Cho. C-H-O-E, and I am the owner.
Welcome. What can you tell us about this, this concept for a restaurant?
Sure. So our menu concept is leaning, is hoping to capture a little bit of the nostalgic element of those that are familiar with Korean food. And for those that aren't, it would be a good introduction to Korean cuisine. Our restaurant concept is a little bit, leans a little bit more takeout-friendly, but we're hoping to have dining for guests that want to dine in as well, and make it very inviting and comfortable for them if they choose to dine in with us. We don't have plans to apply for liquor license, but but yeah, we're just hoping to come into the community, be another restaurant that students and Brookline community members can dine at.
Great. You know, Kynab's busy thoroughfare there. We don't control that street, but do you have, you have plans for how to deal with, you know, Uber Eats DoorDash drivers and so forth in terms of pickup and drop-off there?
Yeah, there is a bit of street parking available along, along the street there, and along the adjacent streets as well. And we're hoping that would suffice for the Uber and pickup drivers.
Yeah, I would just say, Babcock Street in particular is a very busy thoroughfare. We can't, and that, that is Brookline, so just please be aware to tell drivers they cannot double park on Babcock Street.
Absolutely. Yeah, I've been kind of familiar, getting more familiar with that myself as well.
And you have a trash management plan in place, or you're ready to go on that front? Like, like a lot of communities, we've had trouble with rats, and so we're just telling restaurants, please make sure you have a good trash management plan in place.
Absolutely. My neighbor, in fact, they're in the same building, and we share the same company, and they've have a good, they have a good record, and they said they haven't had any issues.
Great. Other questions from members of the panel?
I noticed your, your hours of operation. Can you confirm that your, your intention is to close at eight thirty?
Eight, eight thirty? Potentially nine o'clock. It hasn't been finalized, but our hope is to close a little bit on, on the earlier, and it's more of a lunch-based kind of menu concept. Therefore, yeah, those are the hours we came up with.
Okay, that, that's great. If that's your plan, I did want to confirm. And to the extent you're, you mentioned, oh, maybe nine, that, you, you have to, that would require coming back again. So we do often advise applicants to, if you needed to potentially go to nine, just ask for nine now, so you don't have big trips. But.
Yes, I'm well, well aware. Yeah, I think we could just keep it at eight thirty. I, you know, I don't even know why I mentioned nine o'clock.
All right, we can do that. And then you see that the building department's approval was conditioned on the, the variance for vertical access. You're familiar with that issue?
Correct. I do have, if I was in person, I could show it to you, but the application here, it's all filled out and signed, and I just need to submit it to the building department first, and then I will go ahead and send it to the AAB.
Great. Okay, any other questions? All right, I think with that condition, you know, making sure that you get the, the variance for the AAB, we can recommend approval of this application on the miscellaneous agenda.
One second, Chaz, we're just waiting on a approval for the application from the fire department.
Ah, I'm sorry. And then we need approval from the fire department, too. So that's, that's the other conditional thing, and we'll talk to them, make sure they have everything they need.
Got it, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Welcome to the neighborhood. Good luck.
Excited to be here. Thank you very much.
So he is able to go on, go before on the agenda, okay.
Okay. Next, a change of manager and alternate manager. Change of manager record from Aaron Larson to Marie Esther Jean for Cantina Hospitality LLC, DBA Taco Bell, and eight seventy-two Commonwealth Ave. And the question of approving alternate managers at the same location, same DBA, Samantha and Zubietta and Vashon Watson. Who do we have on this application?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Tom Miller from McDermott Quilty Miller and Hanley in Boston here on behalf of Cantina Hospitality. I'm joined today by Marie Jean, the proposed manager of record. She is on with Israel Vega, who is the regional manager. And I'm also joined by Samantha and Vashon, who are on individually, who are the proposed alternate managers. Just to quickly go through it, all three are tip certified. All three are familiar with the masterful laws, the rules and regs of the ABCC and this board for the sale and service of alcohol. All three have experience in the industry, both generally, as well as specifically with this licensee at this location, supervising the sale and service of alcohol. Miss Jean is authorized to work in the US. She has a lawful permanent resident. Samantha and Vashon are both US citizens. I know you guys are busy, so I won't take up any more of your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Great. In the, in the materials, the police department says they've scheduled, they're trying to schedule interviews with all three. Have those happened yet?
I will defer to them. I don't know if they have happened yet, but they, I know they've been through the fingerprinting process, and I've been working with the PD on getting everything completed.
And usually, the interviews usually happen with the fingerprinting process. So I was just saying to your clients, just make, make sure that all of those are completed before, not next Tuesday, but the following Tuesday, which is the thirtieth.
We will make sure that, we will make sure that happens.
Thank you. Any other questions, members of the panel? Okay, I think conditioned on completing the police interviews, we can recommend approval of this on the Board's miscellaneous agenda.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you all.
All right. Next, change of a lodging agent. Question of approving the application for a lodge house agent. Alex Brainerd to Elizabeth Schmidt for Beacon Inn, seventeen fifty Beacon Street. Who do we have on this application?
David Plough.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about the change in lodging house agent.
Yeah, sure. Alex actually is in the Coast Guard, and he got reassigned to down to Cape Verde. Very nice fellow that got to the line. And the person we have now is Elizabeth Smith, and I think her information, which has an interesting background. She was actually at Stanford University, has come here to be at Harvard University to do some research in the Harvard Medical Institute of Hospital, she's affiliated, but she's in the lab there, and very, very nice person. And and she, she actually did some research, could even look it up, where she made the skin of a mouse transparent. And it became a viral thing. So you can actually look it up. Transparent with a food dye. So I think they called it like a free old monsters. But anyway, she's a very, very nice person, and she's going to be paying attention to things at at seventeen fifty Beacon Street. And Alex did a nice job, too.
She's familiar with the requirements, you know, living on site.
Oh, yes, yeah.
You know, being on call in the event that, you know, the place needs to contact you.
Yes.
That's great.
Other questions from members of the panel? All right, we can recommend approval of this application on the Board's miscellaneous agenda. Thank you for coming by.
Thank you.
All right, next, an alternate manager. Question of approving the application, alternate manager, Chisato Hori for Fuji Mart Cork, DBA Mariucci Japanese Food and Deli at three oh six Harvard Street. Who do we have on this application? Hi, good morning. You're on mute. Did you unmute yourself?
Hi, am I okay now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm Chisato Hori. I'm trying to register or reply for the alternate manager position for Mariucci Brookline on three oh six Harvard Street.
Great. And you, you've been, you've been certified in the safe service of alcohol?
Aside from meaning tips?
Yes.
Yes, I, I have that, yes.
Great. And the police department says they're, they're, you know, arranging an interview with you. Have you managed to do that yet?
I have done the fingerprint, but do I need to make an interview? I mean, do the interview with?
There's just, there's just a brief interview process that they reached out, that they said they'd emailed you. Can you, if you just check your email and make sure that you closed the loop with them.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a big to-do, and we just, we, we, we need, we need to have it done for, before the thirtieth. So just make, get back, get back to them on that front.
Okay, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, other questions, members of the panel?
I apologize, Chaz, I should have flagged this. I believe both of these change of managers require public hearings, and we didn't take other comment on this one over the Taco Bell one.
All right.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I didn't understand the question. I'm so sorry.
It's, it's, it's not, it's, it's a, it's an administ, it's, it's an issue on our end, not on your end.
Okay, okay, okay.
All right.
Changes in, change of managers.
Not a, not a public hearing? Okay, I, I was only, I, you know, because alcohol is involved, but yeah, it's not, I, I seem to recall, we're okay here. Sorry, I'm trying to verify that, but okay, I, yeah, let's, let's make sure you're right. If, if, in the event that we're wrong, we, we may, we may have to ask you to come back, but I think that's not the case.
Okay, so I don't have to worry about the interview meeting?
The, the interview you do have to do, but we're.
Ah, okay, okay.
On our end. Yeah, my understanding was that it's only for transfers of the license, license itself, not change in manager.
Yeah. Do you have thoughts?
I think that's correct. It's definitely an alternate manager.
Okay, thank you. Right, that's what I was saying, alternate managers.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, sorry, sorry to keep you.
Certainly not with her, but the Taco Bell was change of manager, but that's right.
All right, so I think conditioned on completing that interview, we can recommend approval of this application as part of the Board's miscellaneous agenda.
Subject to getting the interview?
Yes, the interview, yep. Okay, thank you very much. Just please make sure you.
Thank you so much. Yes. Thank you.
All right. Next. Change of corporate name and a change of hours for four twenty Harvard Street. Providing the application for change in corporate name from Marquis Caviar Boston LLC to MCP Gourmet LLC, DBA Marquis Caviar Boston at four twenty Harvard Street, Unit A. And then a question for application of the change of hours for that same business, same address, from ten AM to seven PM, Monday through Sunday, for two, eleven AM to eight PM, Monday through Sunday. Who do we have on this application? Do we have someone here from Marquis Caviar? Okay, they knew about this, right? Yeah. All right, well, we'll come back to this at the end, and if not, we'll postpone it. Okay. Next. An amendment of a new common visual, an amendment of a common visual and entertainment license. So making corrections to common visual and entertainment license previously issued to Mission Hill Donuts LLC, DBA's both Dunkin's and Jimmy's Dunk LLC, no, sorry, DBA Dunkin' and Jimmy's Dunk LLC, DBA Jimmy John's at ten twenty Commonwealth Ave. Are taking following actions, retracting the previously approved common visual and entertainment licenses, which have not yet issued for those two businesses, and improving in their stead a single common visual and entertainment license for Mission Hill Donuts LLC, doing business both as Dunkin's and Jimmy John's at ten twenty Commonwealth Ave, with two conditions as stated in the email Nicole Sullivan to Diane Union, which is included in the public packet. Who do we have on this application?
Stephanie Bedrow for the applicant, and Nicole Sullivan is here as well remotely.
Good morning. So thank you. I would, I usually ask people to tell, tell us about this application, but in this case, this is an application that kind of came about through the towns working, working with the applicant. We appreciate your flexibility on this. We want to be sure that we're able to open, and hopefully, having one license here instead of two will do us asked for you. Are there any concerns or questions about the conditions laid out in the letter?
There are no. Yeah, no concerns about the conditions laid out in the letter. There is some confusion or lack of clarity about, especially on ten twenty Commonwealth Ave, if this is going to suffice, or if we now need a new CV application. We understood initially that with this, with this amendment, there would be one, one LLC with a double DBA.
Yeah.
And that that would suffice, but then there was some confusion whether we now needed a new CV application. So as long as we can clarify that for the purpose of today's hearing, and also just make sure that it's that the September thirtieth approval is retroactive, because the plan right now is to open on September twenty-sixth.
For thirteen sixteen, which is the next.
Right, 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 okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll cross thirteen sixteen and compare.
Okay.
In this case, I don't think we need a new application, because we haven't issued the license yet. We haven't actually issued the May license yet. We, we provided adequate notice here that the license is being modified, where we're tracking the original two licenses and issuing one. I don't necessarily, I don't see the need to submit a new application unless anyone on the panel disagrees.
No, I would just submit, just change a DBA. Just to fill out that, we're doing it right now. Yeah, we'll do it, I'll do it with a slip, yeah, so we've counted for our file.
This probably goes without saying, there's no substantive changes between the two proposed.
No.
Great. Any other questions from members of the panel? That was my question. All right, I think we can recommend approval of this on the Board's miscellaneous agenda on the thirtieth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then the next item, thirteen sixteen Beacon Street. This is another corrections to commercial license for a entity that is a, a facility that hosts two different restaurants. In this case, they were separate, there were two licenses separately issued to BB Donuts LLC, DBA Dunkin', and Jimmy Dunk LLC, DBA Jimmy John's at thirteen sixteen Beacon Street. And here, the proposed action, so correction, would be retracting the previous approval of the Jimmy Dunk LLC common visual license, approving a change in DBA for common visual license held by BB Donuts. Um, common virtual license approving a change in DBA for common visual license held by BB Donuts. LLC DBA Duncan to BB Donuts LLC, DBA Duncan, Jimmy Johns, and then the question of approving this one single common visual entertainment license for BB Donuts. DBA Duncan, Jimmy Johns with the agreement on conditions as stated in the attached email, um, from Nicole Sullivan to Dinoian. Um. Again, any questions, uh, regarding or concerns there, um, I note your request that it be retroactive to the twenty sixth. Um, given that the board does not meet until the thirtieth, we can include that condition, um. We don't typically issue retroactive licenses, but I think in this instance, because of the, um. Because the business is in continuous operation and it would just be effectively a gap in operation, or a gap in licensing. For four days while we are dealing with the, um, uh. You know, reissuing the, the license, so yet you have continually renewed license to the Dunkin' Donuts since twenty twenty three, so. I don't see an issue there.
Thank you.
Just want to let you know that for health department, uh, Dr. Roland Laka is on. Um, and he, if he can approve a memo or verbally approve this. This item, um, as well as send a documentation. Stating that he approves.
Thank you, um, Dr. Laka, um, can we, uh, are you, will you be able to, um, sign off on this by the thirtieth?
The twenty sixth.
That's another twenty to be at.
Do you hear me now?
Yeah, excellent.
Okay, uh, so I, I sent a memo to, um, to the select board. Uh, there's things and conditions, um, on that, so once they meet those conditions, yeah, there's, there's no problem for me. I agree, follow it.
Let's just make sure we can get that memo to, to the applicant, and all those conditions can be satisfied by the twenty sixth.
Nicole, do you have that memo?
I do not. I do have a meeting with, uh, with Di today at three o'clock, so maybe he will go over it then, but if I'm happy to start. Getting whatever conditions met, if, if I can get the memo.
We did not receive a memo for thirteen sixteen, we did receive a memo from ten, for ten twenty, um, just still waiting one for thirteen sixteen.
Tiffany Oliva, Assistant Town Administrator for Operations, can you just confirm, I assume that the conditions are the same as the ones that have been communicated between Nicole. Um, and Di via email, so is that correct, or are there any other additional conditions that the applicant needs to meet?
No, I see a condition applies to both establishments.
Got it.
Great, thank you.
And those are, sorry, those are the conditions that are in our, um, in the letter that we submitted pursuant to the board's request.
Yeah, so the conditions is basically if you're gonna share the kitchen. With Dunkin' Donuts, um, you're gonna have to get a, a single DBA. Um. And, uh, and if you're not planning to do that, um, you're gonna have to get. A separate DBA, but then you'll have to put in a new plumbing, make a new plumbing arrangement, um.
We're doing one DBA.
I'm sorry?
We're doing one DBA.
So if you're doing one DBA, then you don't, you don't have to worry about new plumbing arrangement.
So I, I would flag that the, the letter that was submitted by Nicole with respect to ten twenty. Um, lays out conditions, but those conditions can't apply to thirteen sixteen, because some of them are site specific and entity specific, so.
There's, there's an additional layer of thirteen sixteen.
Okay, which we do not have.
It is near.
It's, isn't?
Yep. The last page of the thirteen sixteen.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
So we will rec, conditionally recommend approval of this, retroactive to the twenty sixth, um, and we will, um. Just, uh, and when you meet with Di, uh, this afternoon, Ms. Sullivan, just make sure that you're, you, you, you've checked all the boxes there in terms of the requests.
Thank you.
Great.
So that becomes another condition. Yes. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you, everyone. Thank you all, and I think that's it for our business, thank you all.
Are we going back to?
Oh, thank you very much, I apologize, let's, uh. Good reminder, yeah. The last call, please, for Martin's Caviar Boston LLC, do we have an applicant there? All right, as much as they hate to do it, I'm gonna hold this over, um, so changing, changing DNA and changing one hour, but if they for give a notice and they were.
Yep.
They're not here. They're welcome, welcome to, we can, we can talk about later, not to come before, um. On thirty, um, they're desperate to open, um, but. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys. Are they not open already?
They're open already, they're, they're moving, switching.